We are doing a, we are doing a reception for the kids on Friday from 4:00 to 5:00.
4:00 to 5:00?
Yeah, so if, you know, if anybody kind of can, you know, obviously, you know, be careful of the quorum issue, but we are doing that on Friday, so if you can come by and say hello.
We're all ready for that kind of action.
Yeah.
It's a social...
So, that's all, that's all I have, so that's easy. I'm not here to ask for money or nothing.
All right.
Next time.
Thank you, Terry. Anybody else? All right, see nobody, we'll move on to the business section. Item 6A, approval of the October 22nd, 2019 commission meeting minutes. All have a chance to go over them?
I make motion to approve the minutes as is.
How about that was corrected?
Yes.
Oh, that's corrected?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
That's all right. We have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item B, deliberate and act on board appointment to the Raton Extraterritorial Zoning Commission. Mr. Bray?
Mayor, commission, the city of Raton participates along with Colfax County through a joint powers agreement in administering zoning ordinance for the extraterritorial zone. That is generally an area described outside the municipal boundaries, but within approximately three miles of the municipal boundaries. So, the joint powers agreement calls for two members of a five-member board appointed by the city commission, and in addition, two members appointed by the county commission. This board has not met for a couple of years. There really has not been any development issues there, and the people that filled the seats on the board have generally drifted away. So, we are looking at some business coming up for the extraterritorial zoning commission. You recall that the commission did appoint one member at the last meeting, and we have a second application, so by your concurrence with this appointment, you should have in your packet the application of Randy Madison. That would fill the two seats of the city commission as stated in the joint powers agreement.
All right. Does he have the application in your packet? Any comments, questions?
To approve Randy Madison for the Extraterritorial Zoning Commission Board.
Motion and second to approve Randy Madison to the Extraterritorial Zoning Board. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed, carries. Item C, deliberate and act on event form for Raton Main Street Festival of Lights. Brenda, do you want to talk, or you want Scott to do it?
Well, I would like Brenda to come forward and talk about the event, but Mayor, I'll preface the comments by saying that this is a stationary event, is something that we've done over the past number of years, and as a part of this action, you'll see that the event has been reviewed by emergency services and for traffic control, things like that. And the staff of the city of Raton have given you their recommendation to act favorably on this. There is a blockage of a portion of First Street involved in this, very similar, I think, to what we've done in the past years, but yeah, I'd appreciate it if Main Street, Brenda Ferry representing Main Street, could, could give us all the details on that and promote the event, so.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, we will be holding the event on November 29th. It's the night after Thanksgiving, just so we don't compete with the one that's happening in Trinidad. I believe the city of Bethlehem will be lit that night as well, as well as the Christmas tree here. We already have float entry forms coming in. It was pretty exciting last year, we had 13 floats, so we're hoping to have at least that many, if not more. We will also open Winter Wonderland that night, we'll have Santa and Mrs. Claus. And new this year, we're partnering with the Colfax County Relay for Life, and we are going to display their luminarios all around Heritage Park.
Nice.
It's just a really fun holiday event, and we have so many people in town for the holiday for Thanksgiving that we just kind of blow them away every year, so we appreciate your support. We will, we hope to close from Rio Grande to Clark, I believe, for the floats. Now, if we have more, we may go all the way to Ripley if we can. It just keeps people safe because they start at the park and then they walk down. And the stores will be open, so that if people feel like shopping, they can, or warming up, you know, whatever it is.
It was a little nippy last week.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Motion.
I make a motion to approve the event form for Raton Main Street Festival of Lights.
A motion and a second to approve the event form for the Festival of Lights. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed, carries. Item D, discussion on legislative capital outlay priorities.
Mayor and commission, you have a memo in your packet where I have tried to evaluate our upcoming request for capital outlay through the 2020 New Mexico legislature. The legislature convenes on the Thursday, Tuesday of the, in January of every year. This will be a 30-day session. You can see from the memo that the revenues for the state of New Mexico are strong, they're high, they're actually higher, and we don't know what portion of that is appropriated to capital outlay, but we would expect that funding for capital outlay will be strong again. And so, some direction from the commission to the staff here would allow us to begin that process. You can see that we actually could file requests for capital outlay starting in December, but we have until February. So, it's not something that we're asking for decision on tonight, we simply give you this memorandum to start the conversation going about where the commission would like to go, but I would tell you that capital outlay is generally tied closely to the infrastructure capital improvement plan. So, on the desk, I have given you the ICIP that was approved by the commission back in late August, that was submitted to the state of New Mexico, and I can tell you that typically legislatively, they would follow the priorities that are established by the ICIP. And also generally, I would tell you that I have followed the ICIP here also, and I've specifically listed four items for consideration of the commission. We have a budget by funding that we would plan to invest in these projects over the five-year period, and I'll kind of go down the list generally and then answer questions or let the commission discuss this, but I think that the number one priority from my perspective is the replacement of police vehicles. So, you remember sometime back, we had bought three police vehicles with law enforcement protection funds. We had financed that over a four-year period in which annually those funds, or the majority of those funds, would go to debt service on those vehicles, but I can tell you that we have, with those three, and plus what we've done in the past, we have a lot of vehicles that are really nearing the end of their life in service, and we would continue that way. Now, during that four-year period, we would not be able to tap into law enforcement protection funds again unless the legislature put more funding, a significant amount of additional funding into that program, so we don't know that that's going to happen, but that's really our best chance of financing these vehicles. Now, we can look at general fund for that, but what we see right now is with these older vehicles, and you see a lot of the old Ford Explorers that probably have about eight years of service on them, we're seeing high maintenance costs. That can be major items like replacement of transmissions or engines, and when that happens, that's a big hit on the general fund. And so, with the replacement of those vehicles, I think we can really stabilize that, that unknown to general fund. So, I have given you the recommendation that we request capital outlay in the amount of $300,000, and the cost of outfitting these vehicles included, I'm estimating that we would purchase eight new police vehicles. Then, you'll see according to the ICIP, we would like to continue to replace two vehicles annually after that, and really keep up with the replacement before we get to these major repairs, because the transmission, that can be $3,000 or $4,000. A motor, that can be $6,000 or $7,000. Those are hitting us pretty hard, in addition to all of the other things that come in front of those vehicles. But eight years with this type of service, that's a long time. So, I've listed that as my number one recommendation to you. Secondly, street rehabilitation, and what I've explained in the memo is, I'd like to look at a project. Now, let me, let me hold up for a minute and say that we're looking at a pretty strong street improvement program in 2020. We've got funding in place for our CDBG project, that would be in excess of $800,000 for reconstruction of downtown streets. We have applied to New Mexico Main Street for additional funding on the Great Blocks project. We've got some optimism about getting that project funded, I think fully funded. That again is a large project that we would want to implement in 2020. We have our cooperative agreement project, we have our municipal arterial program, so we're looking at a big street improvement project in 2020, regardless of this funding. And so, with that in mind, and that hits some of our priorities, what I'd like you to think about is this recycling process of millings again, and we had talked about that last year. I'd like to ask for $500,000 in which we would recycle these millings, we run it through a processing plant, we add additional asphalt to it, we lay it down with a lay-down machine, treat it like we would hot-mix asphalt, and there are certain streets that this would work pretty well on, not all city streets, but there are certain streets that are good candidates for that. And with that amount of funding, half a million dollars, we could significantly improve Raton streets, and these are streets that we have put a lot of maintenance effort in. Again, I'm going to say the same thing that I said about the police cars, with the capital improvement, we could really cut that, that maintenance cost that we see ongoing, and that's another thing that makes these streets a good candidate. Then I've listed an economic development building. We do get inquiries from time to time about the Armex building, and the criticism I hear from potential tenants or developers is that the doors are too short and the roof is too short, so they want to see a steel building with a much higher ceiling and much higher doors in it. So, we could think about that and locate that potentially in the opportunity zone to try to attract development investments. I think that with the progress of our economic development plan, it is realistic to look at projects such as transportation type of business coming to Raton, and when you get that opportunity, you would like to have the facilities in place. And then fourth, I've listed storm drainage improvements. I think it was four years ago that we did improvements with the capital outlay. We had chronic flooding on Cook Avenue and Park Avenue. We actually did several phases of this project, and we have really dramatically improved that flooding in those areas. However, I'd look to, like to look at some update in some additional areas, so we're looking at Rio Grande Avenue, Apache Avenue, and Bolden Avenue, and I think that would probably use up our request of $250,000. If you go down the ICIP, you see some other items that are listed below that. Some of these, we've got some other sources of funding that we're either pursuing or we have in place. You see the Great Blocks project on there, we said we have some optimism about that. You see Lake Malloy on there, we are getting ready, I'll talk about that in the infrastructure report, but we anticipate some work on that if the weather is, holds out still in 2019, so we've got some things going on some of these other items. But Mayor and commission, I'll hold up there, answer any questions or let you have discussion on this.
Just a couple of comments. I guess the three vehicles you talked about that we bought, if I remember correctly, weren't those used vehicles or refurbished vehicles?
Mayor, this, Mayor, this last go-around, we did buy three new vehicles, however, in the past, we did buy two used vehicles because the opportunity was there to buy the right vehicle, and that worked pretty well, so we have done that in the past.
And the meeting, we had our joint meeting with the county association this past weekend in the New Mexico Municipal League, and we both, the municipalities and counties, have put in revolutions to possibly support a $5 million increase in both EMS and a $5 million increase in law enforcement funds, so that's got to be used throughout the state, you know, but hey, everybody good health.
And is that $5 million for each direction?
Yes. Since the state said we have some money, let's do it.
Right.
Any other comments about these there?
I have one question about the street rehabilitation. The $500,000, does that include the recycling itself and putting it on the streets? Does that have to be done off-site?
Yeah, that's my thought. So, how that, how that looks is we would have a specialized contractor that has a screening plant, a crushing ability, and a pug mill. They would set up next to the pile of millings, so you would run it through, by sizing, I mean that they would crush this to probably a half-inch or three-quarter inch size, and run it through the pug mill, where essentially a cold process, and you add new asphalt to the mix. Then we would haul it to the candidate street with conventional trucks, lay it down with conventional lay-down equipment, and roll it conventionally.
Thank you.
And maybe this is just a discussion at this point, so.
It is.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. Moving on, item E, deliberate and act on billboard lease agreement between the city of Raton and our media group, LRT, VDA, Linmark Outdoor Media, the property located at 905 South 7th Street.
Mayor and commission, you'll recall at the last meeting, the city commission had postponed deliberations on the lease agreement, and we do have present with us tonight, Tom from Linmark Outdoor Media, he's driven, I believe, from Roswell to attend our meeting, as well as Joe from Raton Sign Company, there on hand. We did not really get a resolution on the, where we want to go with this. I think that the commission really saw the lease agreement for the first time at the meeting, wanted some additional deliberation or time to consider this. We did approve the lease agreement for the billboard that's located on city property along I-25, Southbound I-25. This is billboard that is located on city property in the area of City Market along South Second Street. So, with that action by the commission, I have asked the city clerk to put it back on the agenda as listed for deliberation. We have listed it for potential action as well, and I would defer to the commission for that deliberation.
All right. Any comments, questions, I believe, Mr. Chavis?
I have some thoughts. I absolutely appreciate everything Mr. Egan has done with this business and having that go-forward there, and I think it's been a great thing for town over the decades of its been there, and I appreciated that, and I appreciate Linmark being willing, and in the last meeting we discussed some different ramifications of, some parameters, not ramifications, of the signage. My biggest concern though is that since we are not able to keep it due to maintenance and whatnot as that kind of retro-style sign with the lettering and whatnot, I have this concern with the, that I don't think that a vinyl billboard in that particular location would be keeping with the nature of the entrance to our historical downtown, and so that's my biggest concern for that project. And I personally, I'm not making a motion this time, but I personally would prefer that we not contract that sign out with Linmark and that we consider the lease agreement with Mr. Egan, looking at item C and since that, perhaps number 14 of having the sign taken down instead of having it changed, if it's no longer going to be held by the city. So, that's, those are my thoughts.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Egan, if this is not too personal, is the sale of this sign, is that something you're counting on kind of more or less for retirement funding?
Well, we're, Raton sign has been in business since 1927. My parents have had it since 1963, and it's just time for us to step away from the outdoor advertising aspect of the business. We've been approached by a number of people who were interested in these assets, and in talking with Linmark, I really do feel that the other interests of party, Linmark is a company that would be most sensitive to this particular sign in the community.
Right. They have done some investigating and found that to be true, that your customers do appreciate your work.
No, I appreciate that. We try.
Yes.
But we are, yeah, it's just time for our family to move out of the outdoor aspect of business. A lot of factors involved, and these days you need a larger number of boards than we care to be involved in.
Right.
Really make the overall plan functional, and that's why I think that board is an asset for Raton, it's a Linmark interface.
Right.
And if we were to continue with the board, it's very likely we would not continue to message in the current form. It would likely have to go to a one, it's the only viable remedy for it.
May I ask again, what is the average time length? I mean, is six months of a change out in six months, is that realistic or on those vinyls?
You mean as far, as far as advertising?
Yeah.
It's all up to the...
Or do you try to go for a year?
Yeah, it's all up to the advertiser. We generally don't do anything less than four weeks. A sign like that is more than likely going to go 12, between 12 and 36 months, if I had to guess, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball or anything like that, but generally speaking, that's probably the timeframe it would be.
Yeah.
I did go buy it today, and it's, it's got an ad for the bank, so I mean essentially, it's the same thing, we put a vinyl on it, advertising whoever it is, and that's currently what's doing, is advertising a client.
Right.
And I would, I mean, it's, this would, if it, if what we're talking about goes south, I know Joe and his father want to retire, so you'd probably have to buy the structure from him to be able to take it down, but that's, that was him and you guys. But I just want to be aware that, you know, we're paying for the structure, if we don't pay him for it, somebody else, the city would have to buy it.
Right. According to the contract, that's not how our contract with Mr. Egan reads, that we don't buy the sign, that we, according to C14, that we can have written notice if the sign can be removed, but that's not the cost of the contract. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, some of the signs that's on land is weird, some of the signs that's on city land.
I see.
And it's been that way since 1967, I think, when we bought that piece of land, it would be the western side of the sign, so to speak.
Okay.
So, if 50% of the sign was on city land, 50% is on our land, the 50% of our land is on the left-hand side.
Right.
The sign is on, and I didn't realize this, I know the sign just looks like a big trail, but I did not realize that it was on the city side. The language, the guidelines, protocol, what have you, for some of the flywires are that if that sign can't be made any bigger, all right, it can't be a digger. And if it were to come down, it would never go back up.
Right. And I think that's part of my concern, it's taking it down, I'm not sure it would look better than...
Well...
Changing it.
There's a lot behind it, it isn't pretty.
Right. Yeah.
That's the other side.
Right. And of course, our other problem is, it's really been a community bullet, you know, bulletin board more or less, where the events of the community have been displayed for years, and it's only been recently, the bank is, the last really few months that the bank has opted to not advertise so many events.
Right, as I said, that's, the waiting was many months long.
Right.
If you're messaging it there, and they never had any time to get their business message, that's what they're leasing space for.
Right.
I guess my question is, because I've, in discussions with folks around town, and that first thing says, what do you mean that sign's going to disappear? That sign's been there forever. Have you had any discussions with the bank as to if they would want to continue as the advertiser on that?
We have, no, we have not, because we're, we don't have any...
Right.
We don't have any...
I understand.
We don't have any right to talk to them, so, because they're, they're a customer of his, obviously, if we go in and try to talk to them, that's...
Do you have, do you have any condition that they would stick it out, or?
I have spoken to them, this was a number of months ago, before their transition to AMVAG and that, their indication was that if it didn't stay in that particular current form of messaging, it probably would not be a good place to put it. I even suggested to them the possibility, and Tom felt it was possible for them to do it, of changing out the vinyl for the new one, for fresh message, something like that, to be four times a year. And they didn't want more one for that.
I see a lot of them today, and they, and they're still considering, have not made a decision.
On which one?
All right, well, and I think, I think there is a bigger thing here, you know, driving through the city and whatnot. I think, if you think about bigger cities, you know, a billboard in a bigger city doesn't make a huge impact, a vinyl billboard, whereas I think it would make a big impact here, and maybe yes, behind it could use some beautification or whatnot, you know, that's something that's not too expensive to do, depending on whose property it might be. So, there's ways to work around that. I do agree, I, I mean, if I could stick, I would have that same sign stay there. I think it's a really cool sign, and I think it adds character to the town, but I totally understand the fact that it, the maintenance, and I don't think, even if the city were to buy the sign, I don't think the city wants to take on that kind of maintenance either. I can see why that's a big concern, so I just feel like driving within our city limits and whatnot, having, you know, something big like that downtown, especially with our economic development plan, our revitalization, our beautification, it, I, I think, I personally would rather not have it there. Commissioner Chavez did come to me after the last meeting and agreed with that. He's obviously not here, so I don't know, I would rather have his comments at some other time.
I guess my feeling is that the lease agreement isn't forever, and I think it might be worthy of giving it a try, but...
But if you look at our, with Linmark, it's multiple years that would be signed up for, so five years with the, with an option, I think?
Yeah.
Mr. Yoffe, you guys have anything to say?
The biggest comments I've gotten are, it's changing, you know, it's not going to be the same.
Yeah, and, and change can be hard to overcome.
It is.
When you, and this, there's no way for me to make this sound good, but when you talk about the aesthetics of that particular...
talk about the aesthetics of that particular area of town, you curve right into that city market area. The building itself is, hmm, be it Bass...
I understand.
Their on-premise sign is, you know, nasty, but, so, like I said, when you talk, there's no way for me to make this sound, because I, when you, we talk about the aesthetics of the neighborhood or the area, I don't know that that billboard is the worst part of that area.
Right.
The Quonset Hut style building is there, like I said, what's behind it is, is interesting.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I, I don't know, obviously, I'm here because I want, you know, my company would like the board, so I'm going to say the pros for, you know, my, my part. Obviously, the decision is you guys, I'm going to live with whatever you guys do. And you, and you have a, you have a city that's interested in mine, and that's the way it should be, really. That's why you guys are in the city commission, to make the tough decisions.
May I, you know, a long prior to about 1970, that board did not have a sign. The way it worked was, it was panels all taken down, and four times a year, new panels were put up, and it was just a little bit of a mess. So, it hasn't always been...
A bulletin board.
Well, it's been a bulletin board, but it hasn't been in its current changeable form. My father started giving that about, I think, 1970 or so, to try and find a more cost-effective way of messaging that location.
Sure.
Been taking panels down every three months.
Right.
That's how that evolved, just in the background. It hasn't always been changed.
What changes that sign? Do you have to take the whole sign down to do a vinyl, or could you not put panels up there that would have one, only if you ever had to switch it back to a message board, could it ever be switched back? I mean, is it one or the other?
Well, essentially, yeah, because, yes. But anyway, yeah, because what we would do is, we would, we would make it conform to our, our standard. The, the, what we call extensions, the trim around it would be removed, obviously, the bank logo would be removed, the, where the changeable letters are would be removed. It would be made to a standard size, which I believe is for that sign, is 10 by 4. Yeah, 10 by 4. Essentially, the way a billboard works is, it's just a giant cart, we go in there, we put it up, there's, there's ratchet straps, they go around the back of it, and it'll all be replaced and stretched.
But when it's correctly done, if it's tight, it's not faggy, it doesn't look bad, it looks like a...
Well, I think what, what you said is, if you've got a five-year contract, and the first year, it doesn't look like what you'd want, could that be changed back to a message board?
We, that's, it's not something that we would do. In all honesty, at Rattone, I mean, our, our crew works out of principle, so it's, to come up, there's no way we could come up and change it every week like, like Joe does, because that would be costly for him, for us. Even though we do, I mean, we do have other structures in the area, we've got a couple over on 25, we've got the other one on Clayton Highway, that we work out.
I personally feel that by abandoning it, or by denying this, we are contributing to the abandoned building book of our community. And I don't, I don't believe we can afford that right now, with five years of, of learning with a vinyl billboard, to see if that can look nice enough, or can satisfy us as a better option than empty nine.
It's actually 10 years if you read the contract, 5 years with an option for the left seat, extend for five.
Right.
So, it's essentially a 10-year contract. I guess my comment is that we do have signage plans in place, you know, there is, there are beautification efforts in place, there's no reason why that couldn't, that area couldn't be focused on, on the city's portion of that in some small way to make it look nicer. I think there's plenty of ideas out there. Ron had some ideas of echoing the brickwork that is there in that area, welcoming people to the historic district in a small sign or something like that, depending on, you have to, different, there's always going to be different laws and whatnot with what can go there, but, yeah, I, I, I can't go for a vinyl sign, especially in the middle of town. I just, I don't know if we want to take action or postpone.
As to this commissioning design?
Well, I mean, I, I understand your concerns, it's just that I also know that ideas take a while to take form, you know, to take shape, and I think right now we're looking pretty, pretty abandoned, getting too many spots of turnover. And I would hate to see that contribute to that.
Absolutely. I don't want anything to look worse than it already does. We do have a signage plan already in place, adding something into that is not a big deal. Or beautification coalition has already, you know, worked with different things, so I think we've seen that that has acted pretty fast, the beautifying.
I think that is fast as we, you know...
Well, I mean, you can't beautify all the town at one time, but I think that's what they have focused on.
That's my point, is that we can't do it all at once, and this is one spot we don't have to work on if, if we allow this transaction to go through.
I mean, I also have a concern that you're going to have a billboard there advertising something that, obviously, it won't be inappropriate, but what if Red River buys it? You know, what if you have a, something inviting people to come see your house, what if it's not a local business? You know, there's, that just doesn't seem like a good option either.
I'd have to agree to that part of it.
I mean, yeah, obviously, I can't put too many restrictions on it.
You have to make your money, so I...
Yeah.
You're going to sell it to somebody.
I have somebody I have to answer to.
Right.
I'm too old to go look for a new job. I mean, we do have, we do, I mean, we do have some exclusions as far as, so I can go on there. I don't know that I could, and, I mean, I don't know if another community would want to come and put something in your downtown. I, I can't answer that.
And, and, you know, I think we have other outdoor recreation options coming out that maybe we'd gladly use that sign. I, I don't, personally don't see anything wrong with advertising outdoor recreation.
Yeah, we do...
Although I don't think it's an advantageous spot for that, and I think it's, it's, you know, whoever is going to go for that sign, it's going to be somebody who wants you to come to their restaurant, maybe at the next turn, or, I don't know, you know.
I think that's the thing, because we don't have any control over who's going to advertise.
Who's going to advertise. But on the other hand, sometimes you just have to go in a good faith.
Well, and, and obviously, there has to be somebody who's willing to pay for it, because if we buy it, we will convert it to our specification. First thing that'll go up is a, is a, is a green, big green or white sign that says available on it with our phone number. That would be the first thing, unless, obviously, unless somebody comes to us and says, or maybe if the bank or whatever, somebody comes and says, you know, I heard you bought it, we want to, we would like to advertise on that.
And we would probably want to do the same thing. Because, you know, vinyls don't have to be non-stated, they can be attractive, they can be...
Right.
It's a matter of what the graphics consist of.
Well, right, and every business is going to be a little different and...
Doesn't have to be a hideous...
Right, I, I'm just saying vinyl in general, in, I, I guess I would be, it would be hard for me anywhere in town where you're in a city, it just reminds me of downtown Chicago or something like that. But, I mean, if we could choose who it was, and we knew that it was going to be Sugar Creek Canyon State Park advertising, hey, just up this way, you know, that'd be wonderful. I think it's...
We don't have that luxury.
Yeah, we don't have that luxury, and they need to make money.
That's right.
That's the whole point of it.
Christmas is coming, right?
Well, I mean, are you, would you be amenable to having a shorter term on the lease, or is that the term you need to make the money back?
Yeah, we don't need a lease that term, because obviously, we're paying him for it, so we have, we have to make our money back.
Are you asking about the five years of the option for the extension?
Basically, both.
Yeah. I mean, because that, to me, that option is just an option.
It's an option in their court, though, so we're saying, yeah, that they have the decision, we can't say, hey, we don't like it, we're done, not the last thing.
Well, I just hate to see it turn into another empty spot, frankly. We have enough of those. But it, it also sounds like we have a...
I'll make a motion to deny the billboard lease with the city of Rattone and Elite Media Group, LLC, PA Linmark Outdoor Media, to properly locate it at 905 South Second Street.
We have a motion and a second to deny the lease between Linmark and City of Rattone. Is there any further discussion?
Well, this time, is there anything we can do, if we can clarify for you, what are your reasons?
I guess, I think I've already stated that if it could stay as it is, that would be what I'd be looking for, but I know that that's not what you're interested in doing, which, you know, and I totally understand that as well. Or a change possibly to the Linmark agreement, where it's a, a lot shorter term, or we could, you know, see the impact of that, but obviously, that's not cost-effective either for Linmark.
Where is that lease situation?
And that item's not on the agenda, and so that'd be something that we would have to come back before the commission. So, we're not able to really discuss or take action on that at this time. As far as we can...
Yeah, that would have to be, maybe a second, we'd have to come back for renewal.
Well, I'm going to stick, because I think it's doing more harm than good to deny it, so...
Well, at this time, is there any other discussion? My plan, I guess we'll have to take a roll call vote here.
Okay, Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacama?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
No.
Mayor Sagata?
No. So we have the four, four ties. It's good. We're just going to have to come back.
Sorry, one trick for you.
Would you do a five-year lease for a vinyl, then you just, you have to replace it every year or every 12 months? I mean, could, if somebody, if there's a couple hotels or somebody that wanted to, and restaurants all want to join together, I mean, would that be something that would be feasible? Or do you have to switch it out?
No, it doesn't, no. It's, it's whatever, whatever the, whatever the contract is with the advertiser, like I said, it may go, you know, six months, it may go 36 months. Generally speaking, a hotel will do 36 months, you know, generally speaking, a, a restaurant may do, you know, less than that, just all, no, no hard and fast rule.
I was just thinking, maybe if it was offered for some competitive, a little bit better competitive price to locals, we might be able to get the lease for five years with every year replacement of just a different, you know, different saying, different picture, but it's still the same.
And for, for billboard advertising, less is more. If you get more than about seven words on a billboard, you've got too many. When we get advertised...
But this is local, so you're not driving 70 miles...
And that's, and that's, and that's true, it's still, it's still, because you only, you only effectively have like seven seconds to actually read it, so, you know. But then we get, and we get advertisers that want to put everything on there, you try to talk about it. The other thing we hate to do is put people's pictures on there.
Sure.
We have, we have banks that does that all the time, they fire people, and all of a sudden, it's like, oh, people leave.
We're not, we're not, if I don't, if I'm first to work anymore, I don't put pictures on them.
I would like to make a comment, if, if, when it comes back before the commission, that if possible, Linmark, look at the contract, find out if you can do anything to keep it local or shorten the term, talk to the company and see if any of those things are possible.
I'd be, I'd be willing to do the five years, to, to, let's see, right, to do five years on it.
Without the option for...
Without the option.
But there's nothing, I mean, I understand, you may be able to get more money from us, but there's nothing that's... So I know we have a contract with another billboard company that is on our property, where I think there's a certain area where the billboards are encouraged to be local.
Mayor and Commissioner, if I could make a comment on that, there, there were numerous billboards on city property from another entity in the past, and the city, and I believe actually it was the Rattone Water Board, had made the decision to terminate those lease agreements and remove those boards at some point in the past. But there was one board that I understand had some time left on that agreement. So as the time ran, and the intent was to remove those boards, I think there were some changes on the commission, or changes in, in the city in general, and, and that company had offered terms to the city commission that were acceptable, and the board has remained. But there was a decision, and there's that precedent to consider, that the, those contracts expired, and there was a decision to remove those, and that did happen, and I think that some boards, some new boards were built in on private property in that case. Now, I would just add that, you know, we, we have, I did bring in the city attorney, Mr. Florsham, in the negotiation of this contract, it's been some time back, and we have talked to both Rattone Sign Company and, and Linmark to get to this point, and we really missed a significant point, in that we weren't sure that the commission wanted to negotiate the renewal of these lease agreements, and the aesthetics would be an issue that would come up here. So, we're talking about it now, after this, this time of basically negotiating, you know, more nuts and bolts terms.
I understand you guys have been working on this for a lot of...
Yeah, but, but, you know, we probably in retrospect should have brought this to the commission for discussion prior to that negotiation, to see if, if it's something the commission would be interested in going forward with, but, well, we've invested some time in it, we're having the discussion now. So, then for me, you know, I guess I would request direction from those commissioners here. Well, we have that, that stalemate here tonight, we are missing one commissioner, and so, I guess I'm inquiring, would you bring it back to a future commission meeting where we are going to have a majority, a simple majority? Would you then, or, or direct us to in some way renegotiate terms and bring that back?
I would personally like to have it with the commission, I'd like to hear Mr. Chavis.
No, I...
I understand you guys talked to him, but I'd still like to hear his, his opinion, that would give us the time, last name, I forgot your last...
Palmer.
Palmer, Mr. Palmer has already said that he would be willing to possibly adjust his, his contract, his lease. I think we would absolutely want to bring this back to the commission at a future date. I'm not sure that our next meeting would be ideal, since that is right before Thanksgiving.
I'd rather knock him up.
So I would say...
I'm cooking the turkey.
I would probably say the first meeting in December. We could, that would give us time to negotiate things and maybe have more discussion with Joe and Mr. Palmer.
Got that.
Yeah, I'd like to see in the contract too, even though we talked about how it's on a seating byway and whatnot, that definitely it won't be digital, you know, that, addressing that, that it won't get bigger, just stated.
Yeah, we can't, we can't make any changes, but if you want an internet, yeah, I will make.
Or just per whatever it is.
Yeah.
In DOT, this is very special.
Sure. Well, appreciate you coming up again.
Yeah.
Sorry we didn't come to a, well, we kind of come to a, so we will look forward to seeing you in December.
That'll be fun, that'll be fine. I appreciate the commission's time and effort, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's, it's a tough, it's a tough thing for you guys.
It's a sign that's been there forever, and a lot of folks have said.
Yes.
What's going to happen? No, you can't do that, you know? It's, and I understand your, your situation during that.
Well, you know, I think I mentioned this one before about six years or so ago, I think we built that sign and just blew it out.
Right.
And we were in the process of tearing it down. I don't know how many dozen people pulled up, trying to take me down.
Right.
Pardon my child, but I broke it.
Right, right.
Everybody remembers it, so it is a fixture in the community. I know that Linmark is sensitive to that, and also then a company from LA or Chicago or wherever it might be.
Well, I appreciate you.
And thank you much.
Thank you, appreciate you guys, your patience.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
I want to head to Rob.
Have a safe trip.
Thanks. Hey, you guys picked great weather for me to be up here. Because I was watching the weather. It was really beautiful coming up, thanks.
Thank you. No, we, we generally, with the discussion, we've given direction to Mr. Berry. All right. Item, I believe we're on F now. Introduction of ordinance, made in section 130.136, unlawful carrying of a deadly weapon to allow for hunting within the city limits that is scheduled, managed, and regulated by the New Mexico Game and Fish Department for the purpose of controlling, excuse me, overpopulation of wildlife in designated areas and as authorized by the city commission. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, the City of Raton has an existing ordinance, 103.136, in the City of Raton Code of Ordinances that generally prohibits the unlawful carrying of a deadly weapon. There are four circumstances described in that ordinance where a deadly weapon could be carried. I don't have those in front of me, but it, it may be an exception such as a law enforcement officer being armed. And those four exceptions to carrying a deadly weapon really are mirrored by state statute. Now, in the past, I have talked to representatives of the Mexico Game and Fish Department. Thank you. And we do have representatives present here tonight to participate in the discussion, answer questions that the commission has. And it goes back to something that we heard at the last commission meeting, that there is an overpopulation of wildlife in the area of Raton Country Club. And there's thought about how to control that and mitigate the damage that is caused to greens and fairways by this overpopulation of wildlife. So while I have had some preliminary discussions with New Mexico Department of Game and Fish, we probably need much more in-depth discussion on where we're heading with this. But in lieu of that discussion, I have drafted up a revision to 130-136. It adds a fifth case where you could carry a deadly weapon within the city limits. Let me go through one through four. Thank you, Mayor. Number one is in the person's residence or on real property belonging to him or her as an owner, lessy, tenant, or licensee. Number two, in a private automobile or for other private means of conveyance for lawful protection of the person or another person's property while traveling. Three, by a peace officer in the lawful discharge of his or her duties or on a target range as provided in section 130-140. So the wording I added in this proposed change to the ordinance that I've given to the commission tonight is, five, any person lawfully engaged in a hunting program that is scheduled, managed, and regulated by the New Mexico Game and Fish Department using approved weapons as authorized by New Mexico Hunting and Fishing Regulations under the provisions of chapter seventeen and chapter thirty New Mexico statutes for the purpose of controlling overpopulation of wildlife in designated areas and as authorized by the city commission. Now, Mayor, I would note that on the agenda, we have listed this as an introduction of an ordinance. As we know, that it takes several meetings before we can consider final action on an ordinance. And one of the steps in the introduction, if, if this wording is introduced, would be to schedule a public hearing. And with that, Mayor, I will answer any questions. And I would also state that, again, we do have representatives of the department here. We also have Mr. Pobar representing Raton Country Club present.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mr. Berry, just stated, this is, and in production, there will be no action taken on this. I believe this could count as one public hearing or not?
It is not listed as a public hearing, Mayor. And you can have multiple public hearings, but the, generally, we would take introduction by the commission as authorization to schedule a public hearing.
Do we have to act to interrupt, or is this going to be a question?
You would have to take action to introduce the ordinance. And Mayor and Commissioner, I would state that I have got a number of letters and email stating opposition to the proposed ordinance revision. I think that you all have received that as well. If you haven't, I will forward those to you. But there is some opposition stated.
Emails and phone calls, yes. At this time, we would welcome any comments from the floor.
I think that there are worsens.
Everybody's shy.
I'm going to answer questions.
Okay.
I'm Joe Pobar from the country club. By any means, we're not looking to eliminate all animals out there. We're really looking to control the population that's currently there that consistently tears up the golf course. That is an expense that we don't have on a regular basis to continue to affix. Also, it, it prolongs our tournaments a little longer in the, at the beginning of the season, which is revenue towards the city. We could have a tournament in May that we'd have forty, fifty, sixty people come from out of town staying in hotels to play in a golf tournament. But we have to delay those for a month because of the damage that's caused now that we can't heal the course until we turn water back on and grass starts to grow again. So we are taking a lot of precautions. This is one tool that could help in that precaution. It's not by, by any means, the only tool that we're using. We're using mountain urine, mountain lion urine. We're using fencing, you know, we've repaired a lot of fencing out there to, to eliminate some of the elk that do come in at night and tear up the green. So we're trying to do preemptive measures without eliminating any animals out there. Fishing Game has, has done a catch and release scenario. That's, I'll let them talk about how successful that is and what the expense and what the, what, what goes on with that. So I think part of this would be helping us continue to fund better ways of controlling the animals out there without eliminating them. So that's kind of where we're at. Fishing Game has offered us to fence the entire property in. I'm not sure we want to be in that scenario either. We could, that would be an eight-foot fence, just like they've done on the highways. The issue would be what happens when animals do get in there? What do we do? You know? The turkeys will fly in. The fence is not going to stop that. We have probably somewhere between three and four hundred turkeys out there on a regular basis. There's quite a bit of those that roost in trees, that are damaging trees. They're damaging the neighbor's trees as well. They're being moved over to the country club because I think Fishing Game has had calls that says, hey, can you move these animals off my property? So we see that in the community. I'm in the process of going door to door and, and getting a, in that particular area. Obviously, I don't think it would be advantageous for me to go the entire city and ask for that. But obviously, the public hearings will take care of that as well. But we're looking at different tools to help the process. I don't think any one of them's going to solve all of the issues, but I think it'll help curb the damage that's caused out there now.
Any questions for Joe?
Mayor, if I can interject here, I, in, in bringing this to the commission, I certainly understand the challenges when we're discussing the control of wildlife anywhere in the city limits. Certainly, there are significant challenges to that. But I bring it to the commission so that we can discuss this and with the stakeholders, with everyone that's involved, and the commission, and the public can be heard in this as well. So we certainly understand, I certainly understand the, the concerns that have been raised. And I think the department is represented here. They, they understand that as well. And a list of questions, I think, was, had been prepared. And I'm not sure how, you know, this process might work. I had expressed, I'm sort of looking for management from the department. And I think they're here to, to try to answer questions that the commission would have or that we would anticipate the public would have. But certainly, I think the department understands the challenges of what we're considering here as well. So it's just an opportunity for, for a discussion with the community. There is a bona fide issue with wildlife. We really see it all over town, but we understand, they, they like the golf course. They spend a lot of time on the course. We understand, yeah, we understand the issues there, but, you know, there, there are challenges to fixing that as well.
I guess my, my question would be, from the beginning, finish is, what kind of, are we looking at a rifle hunt, a bow hunt? What are we, do you guys determine that or?
Mayor Commissioners, yes, we would determine that. We would build that in our hunt structures, and that's actually kind of Mike Herman and Bob's section. You know, we're here to answer any questions tonight. We're neutral, you know, whatever the city decides to do. We enjoy the longstanding, good working relationship with the city and the bear dumpsters and things like that. And so we want to continue to facilitate communication and, and a good working relationship. And so, you know, we're here tonight to answer any questions. But the hunt structure, the hunt dates, the weapon types would be determined by us, by the agency, and we would work with the city in coordination to, to determine season dates, bag limits, weapon types, et cetera.
I guess another question then would be, have you, and I'm sure you, the answer to this is probably yes. You've done this in other areas, and what success have you seen in keep the animals aware, reduce the amount of animals for the long term?
Mayor Commissioners, we've done a number of things in different cities. We've had a similar issue in Silver City, within the city limits of Silver City. And I was stationed there for a little while. And so it was, it was very similar to what we're dealing with in, in Raton, particularly with the deer, maybe not so much the bear issue, but with the deer and the elk issue. We've trapped and transplanted, relocated deer and turkeys from the golf course. And I'll be honest, we have limited success in, in all those hunts, you know, whether it's hunting, whether it's trapping and relocating. You know, it, it works, it, it works sometimes, you know, but, but animals are going to find, find the green, they're going to find the water and things like that there. And then they don't know boundaries, you know what I'm saying? So, so we've had limited successes, I'll put it that way. I think Bob maybe can speak to some of the success we've had in Silver City. He may be a little more familiar with that than I am, because after I left.
You know, we've done special hunts in Silver City. We've done hunts in Roswell for pronghorn antelope. So we've, we've had experience doing these types of things in other communities with, you know, similar or, you know, in some cases, you know, other species. In almost all cases, you're not going to go in and resolve this with one or two hunts. It would be an ongoing, continuous effort, like, you know, Major Sanchez said. You know, it's not something you're going to resolve quickly. And so it'd be something that you would have to commit to doing this, you know, maybe not every year, but every other year. That's the kind of thing where if you were to adopt this proposal, it would open another avenue. It doesn't mean we have to do it every year. But we would have to work with the city council to figure out what would be an acceptable timeframe because the reality is, it would probably be a long-term effort. Right. And you just answered my next question. I was going to ask you, was this going to have to be year to year or? Right. The avenue typically would approach issues like this would be through what we call a population management hunt. Population management hunts are very flexible. We can define season dates, we can define weapon types, we can define the hunt area. So we have a lot of flexibility in how we design a population management hunt. And obviously, we'll work with the city council and any city officials to make sure that we're implementing that as it's needed and to try to work with the community to find a way that it's done safely and effectively as possible.
Mayor and Commissioner, for the department, I, I think one of the inputs I've got is people are very interested in the weapon type. And so they're asking me, would this be a hunt with high-powered rifles in the, in a close proximity to a populated area? But in the other instances that you've cited, what kind of weapons were used there in those cases?
Right, we can restrict weapon types. You know, in a place where you're talking about an urban area, we probably would want to look at not opening it up to, you know, high-powered rifles. We probably would suggest something like shotguns with slugs, archery equipment, perhaps, you know, primitive muzzle loaders, those types of things. We're currently doing a population management hunt for elk in the middle Rio Grande Valley, that, that river area. And there, we have in fact restricted that to those three weapon types. Shotgun with slug, muzzle loader, a primitive muzzle loader, and archery equipment for similar concerns because there you have a very narrow corridor and then you have agricultural land with houses and buildings on either side. So that's why we did not want high-powered rifles there. And, and actually, that's not necessarily entirely for us to decide. The people that we are working with down there, which one's the conservancy district, they also have those concerns. We shared those concerns. And so we said, we will choose as a group, we jointly decided to not allow high-powered rifles. And, you know, we would work with the city council if we went down that path and we could restrict it to just archery equipment if that's what the city council felt was the best for their community. So we would have the ability to restrict weapon types if that's what the city council felt was best.
Manager Berry, Mayor Commissioners. So, so we've, we've developed archery-only hunts. I think to answer your question, archery-only hunts in Silver City area within the city limits. We, we, we worked with the city, I believe they called it a city council, not a city commission, but we worked with the city council to change an ordinance similar to what you're, you're thinking about here, to provide archery-only opportunities for, for...
about here, to provide archery-only opportunities for archers. We also developed a hunt structure within our hunts that was a limited, it was a draw only within, I believe, if you weren't successful in the draw, and Bob, maybe you can help me out, if you weren't successful during the draw process, you had an option to hunt this Silver City urban archery-only hunt, you know what I mean? So there's some options that we can work with the city commission, and we can work to try to come something. I think the goal of everybody is, you know, we want to do it safe, whatever we do, we want to be smart about it, we want to make sure we're safe about it, we want to make sure we alleviate any damage, help try to alleviate damage that the wildlife is doing to private property, the golf course, neighboring, the neighborhoods and things like that. So I think, you know, we're open to work and discussing to see what works best for the city of Raton and in its unique situation.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know if it's a concern, but it's this image that Manager Barry has put in my head, is Bambi running down the street with an arrow stuck out of his side. That could be kind of devastating to some folks in town, you know. Odds are, that may happen.
It's always possible. You cannot rule out the possibility that something like that would happen, you know, not, not if it can last. I understand that.
That will happen. I mean, there's, when I was stationed in Silver, before the city ordinance was changed, we had deer running through town with arrows in it. Because I was stationed in Raton for several years. We investigated every so often a deer running around town with an arrow in it that we had to take care of. I mean, those things do happen, whether it's during a hunt, a legal hunter with the license during a season, or whether it's somebody out of season, those things do happen, yes, sir.
And if something like that does happen, we contact you, and you guys take care of the animal, or does it continue to run through town?
When we can, when we can take care of the animal safely and humanely, then we take care of the animal. If, you know, most, there are no vets up here who, you know, who are going to work on something like that. So we will take care of the animal if we can find it and take care of it safely and humanely.
Are there any hunts where an officer would be on site?
Where an officer is on site all the time, is that what you're?
Could be a guy. A zoom, a zoom, it would be a day type of hunt, right?
I think that's open for discussion. I think we can build that hunt structure, however, however, the city commission and the Department of Game and Fish can work together to build that. If we wanted to limit it to something, I think that we can do, we can build it however you all think it needs to be built in, you know, coordination that we're following, other state statutes and regulations.
Are we talking just, are we talking private landowner tags, is how this would work, or is it considered a depredation hunt where you'd be more managed? I mean, I guess I'm concerned, or that's my concern, is it just overpopulation that's been studied, that we have a certain amount of, say, does, where you have to have the depredation hunt, or you're?
So if we go with, Mayor, Commissioners, if we go with the population management hunt, that can be structured to deal with the damage, you know what I'm saying, with the depredation, right? And we can structure those hunts pretty much how we see fit and how we think we need to, numbers, bag limits, things like that. I believe your first part of your question was landowner authorizations or landowner tags, basically. I don't think we would go that route with this situation. I mean, those are, this is a unique situation, and if we chose to work with the city of Raton and develop a hunt structure based on your guidance and what you all want to do, then I think we would go more the population management route and the wildlife complaint route.
Thank you. Also, in terms of, I mean, the comment is that all these different ways to mitigate the damage, a lot of them are mildly successful, I guess. So how successful is fencing compared to hunting and other things? And obviously, there'd probably be a time where an animal might get trapped in there or something like that, but I would think that fencing would be way more successful than hunting.
Mayor, Commissioner, Chadley, fencing is the most effective way to keep animals off of somebody's hayfield, you know, granted, if it's done, and we won't have so much money. So, you know what I'm saying? You can only fence so much, but that is the most effective way to try to keep animals out of an area where they're causing damage or they're not wanted, I guess, to put it another way. I mean, the highway, I think we've had, you know, this corridor here, the Raton Pass, was, has typically been one of our, where we had the largest number of roadkill animals, whether it's deer, elk, bear, antelope, whatever the case may be. And the fence went up, and I think it's been pretty successful. Yes, we have had a couple of deer that I know of, at least, you know, get in between there, and so, you know, we go deal with it as we can. But fencing, to answer your question, Commissioner, is the most effective way.
And then I know that you guys have, sorry, that you've done a lot of work with turkeys over there. I don't know if you've done a lot with others. I've spent a lot of time just walking, I'm not a golfer, but been over there a lot, and there's a lot of wildlife. So are we talking, you would probably be hunting turkeys as well as deer, elk? I know that that would be up for discussion, but what animals are we looking at specifically?
Mayor, Commissioner, I believe that's up for discussion, yes. You're correct about that. But I think the primary animals right now that we've had most of the, I guess, issues with in that area would be deer, probably number one, if I'd rank them, turkeys probably number two, and then the elk. I think that would be.
Correct, yeah.
I'll defer to the country club.
The sand or damage on the fairways now, and the greens itself, just the picking of the grass and just the damage itself is getting a little overwhelming to keep up with that and fix it on a regular basis. It usually happens at this time of the year. This is really where we see most of the damages, in the September through January timeframe here. And that's really the rut season or the roosting seasons, all those things. So they all get together. I mean, if you could go out there at six in the morning, or five in the morning, six in the morning, and you'll see probably 75, 80 deer of all sizes and shapes, and several hundred turkeys out there easily. The elk come in around, I guess it's around, we've had cameras out there, they come in around 2:30 in the morning, and they're gone by daylight. So, you know, it's not something that we're ever probably ever going to eliminate any of that, other than the fencing that's out there currently, it's only on two sections of the entire property. The rest of the area is wide open. Fencing will still help, we just have to figure out a gating system so that if you have an open gate, you're going to have open animals. You'll have a lot of animals coming in and out of there. But we're trying to eliminate some of that by, in the wintertime, fencing off some of the green so that we don't get that damage on a regular basis. We're trying all kinds of different flagging, some cameras out there to see where they're coming from, what kind of issues are happening. So we're, as we move forward, we're trying to put a plan together on how to manage that better. And I think fixing part of that fence has solved some of it, but that fence is 60, 70 years old, it's in these few places. We've kind of patchworked it for now. We'll go from there.
What kind of possibility is there for fencing funding for you guys, or how does that work?
I'll defer to Mr. Osborne, that's his section.
Well, first, we would have to have additional discussion with our chain of command and our director to see if, you know, fencing materials is something that we would pursue. So, you know, we can't promise that at this point, but, you know, we could certainly have additional discussions if that's what the city council would like us to do. If we did proceed down that route, what it would be is, we would provide materials, and then it would be up to the city, to the city, the landowner, the country club, to come up with funding to put up that fence. So we would only provide materials.
I do know that the majority of people spoke to me about the issue, that would be their preference in fencing.
One thing I just want to add, Mayor and Commissioners, is this wouldn't be the only, I mean, we would still continue to do some of the other intervention methods, you know, perhaps trapping and relocating again. I mean, we're not just going to, I mean, if the city decides to do this, and, you know, we're hoping to work with you, whatever you decide, and continue to work with you and the country club to, you know, this, we don't want to get, I guess, down a one-track road and think that one or the other is the only option. We're open to all ideas.
We appreciate that.
Any other comments, questions?
I'd be interested, thank you so much. I'd really be interested in seeing a more comprehensive plan for mitigating the problem, perhaps, you know, seeing where hunting ranks in that plan, and seeing the possibility of fencing before we would introduce the ordinance, just because of setting that precedence of having that ordinance. Even though we have a process and.
Yeah, there's a process. Looking at your reasons, still voted, yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, I agree, I think I'd be interested to hear what Mr. Chadis has to say about it.
Yeah, I definitely recognize it's a problem, like I said.
Yes, we do.
Understand that, and really appreciate all your input and comments.
So with that comment, can I follow up with you all as far as, you know, drilling down on the details a little bit? Maybe, you know, we can get together locally, try to bring more information to the commission?
Yes.
We can set that up?
Great.
Do I need to make a motion?
No.
No, there's no action.
There's no action, so we can move right along. Item G, deliberate to act on proposal from consensus planning for comprehensive plan update. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, I have asked our Public Works Director, Jason Phillips, to really take the lead on our comprehensive plan update. He's here to give you some information on that. I would tell you that the comprehensive plan, the last update of that, I believe, was in 2004. Generally, you would look at updating it every five years. However, we just haven't had a lot of changes in Raton, and it is comprehensive, it deals with a lot of areas. We have done other types of planning, such as downtown master plan, we've done a 40-year water resource plan, we've done a number of plannings, our strategic plan, we've worked on economic development. So those are all parts of a comprehensive planning effort. However, a comprehensive plan update can be important specifically to certain grant applications where you can get credit for having an up-to-date comprehensive plan. So, well, five years might be kind of short for Raton. We are at about 15 years. And so we, our recommendation to the commission is it's timely to move forward with the comprehensive plan. Jason has done some work on this, he's got some information for you on moving forward, and I would turn that over to Mr. Phillips.
Mayor, Commissioner, thank you. Before you, on the agenda this evening, you have a proposal from Consensus Planning. Consensus Planning is the firm that did our last comprehensive plan back in 2004. The principal involved in that planning was a Ms. Jackie Fishman, who is still with Consensus Planning. So as I put together the grant application for NMFA, she was one of the first people that we reached out to. Obviously, we feel pretty good that a plan that was designed to last five years is 15 years old. The quality of work that they did in the past was superb. They're familiar with Raton. So Mr. Barry and I have had a few discussions with Ms. Fishman about if they were even interested in coming back to Raton, pursuing this plan. They've submitted a proposal that's for $50,000. As you may recall, when we first talked about the comprehensive plan, we were anticipating that we'd pay a minimum of $25,000, and the state through NMFA would fund about $25,000. We did receive funding for $50,000 through NMFA. So all we would really be responsible for is the NMGRT portion of Consensus Planning's proposal. I personally think that, you know, the plan that they did was well put together, they've outlined a process in this proposal that gathers a lot of public input. And in all honesty, a comprehensive plan is only as good as the work that's done preceding it, our ability to communicate to them what we want for land use going forward, what elements of economic development are in the proposal. A lot of the information will come out of City Hall, but a lot of information will come through a public hearing process and meetings where they gather some citizen input. And I feel pretty strongly that Consensus Planning, you know, is more than capable of doing it and would be a good fit. Really, their familiarity with the process, the area, the plan that they have won't have striking changes to it from our last one, but the process that they went through to get that will be recreated with current citizens. And it'll get the input that we need to hopefully give us a document that'll last more than five years, but that's kind of the shelf life of these nowadays. The second part of that is NMFA sets aside a certain amount of money for municipalities like ours to apply for funding. And we maybe would like to pursue an ADA plan or an economic development plan. But prior to receiving any other chunk of the up to $100,000 every two years, they require you to first update your comprehensive plan. So before we can open the other doors, we've got to go through this process. I think we've got the right partner to go through with it, and I would recommend that we approve this proposal and happily stand for any questions if you have any.
Now, I would just add to that, from a procurement standpoint, the commission is authorized to consider the proposal, awarded the proposal tonight. NMFA has conferred, I think, with this recommendation, we're ready to go forward with them. So the commission is proper to consider this and take action if you so wish.
One small comment, I think the economic development and some of the statistical data can definitely come from the plans we already have from other cities. They've already gathered a lot of that, so that may be a help in this process, since we've already gained some traction with that.
Absolutely.
I think it looks good.
Absolutely. I think it's, I had to talk with Mr. Barry, like you said, we've had so many different types of plans, couldn't remember what plan this was in the realm of things, but looking through it, it looks like it's the one to go with.
I agree.
I've had citizen input that they've really wanted us to get our comprehensive plan updated.
Well, and overall, from a firm standpoint, Consensus Planning did this plan for us back in 2014, but they are kind of a full-service firm, that they are also responsible for the landscape design elements of the multimodal center. They've been active in Raton more recently than 15 years ago and are familiar with great blocks as well as multimodal and kind of where we're at. So they're not coming in blind by any means.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for Consensus Planning for comprehensive plan update.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the proposal for Consensus Planning for the comprehensive plan. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Item H, deliberate to act on bid awards for public works asphalt roller, and I want to guess you're the man there.
I am indeed, and a bit indecisive at this time. As part of our capital outlay monies that we received, we are equipping public works equipment that needs replaced. I had placed an invitation for bid out there and received three responses. For this evening, I'd like to request that the sign be tabled. I have some due process that I'd still, or due diligence that I'd like to go through to make sure that I'm 100% sure that the roller we're getting is going to be the right size for our department going forward. We have a couple of concerns with Ashley Voess, the engine in the number one and number two bid regarding its behavior at high elevation, and I'd like to at least, if not research it farther, potentially run one of these rollers or get some more information before I commit to purchasing that. So at this time, if I could request to be tabled until our next meeting at the. So at this time, if I could request to be tabled until our next meeting, if the lead is.
Okay, so next meeting would be fine?
Yes, sir.
I'll move to postpone action on the bid award for public works.
Okay, we have motion and a second to postpone until next meeting, action on item H. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Close. Question carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I deliberate an act on Eastern New Mexico Engineering Cost Proposal for Raton Transfer Station Project, Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is actually an update of a cost proposal that, uh, we had talked about two years ago, uh, and we, at that time, we anticipated, uh, construction of, uh, Raton Transfer Station Project and, uh, completion of design on it and request for bids, however, we ran into the refinancing issue which, uh, we have worked on in early part of two thousand and nineteen. So, uh, we have prepared, uh, a bid package for the Raton Transfer Station, we would anticipate, uh, request for bids, um, fairly soon. I, I think that now realistically, we're looking at, uh, requests for bids going out after the first of the year. Uh, but we do have one piece here, uh, the electrical design for the transfer station, there's, uh, lighting considerations, store operators, uh, operation of other equipment such as a power center there. So I've asked for this proposal from Eastern New Mexico Engineering, uh, this really is an update of a proposal they had provided two years ago. So they have provided that tonight, uh, I rec, have a recommendation for approval of the, uh, proposal as submitted, and if we do get your approval, uh, I will, uh, issue the notes to proceed to Eastern New Mexico Engineering, uh, tomorrow, and, uh, we will get that in place. That's really the, uh, final piece of design work that we need to go forward. Uh, we will need to also, uh, provide that design work to New Mexico Environment Department, both Construction Programs Bureau and the Solid Waste Bureau, and, uh, receive some authorization to go out to bid, so we'll be doing that as well.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
I believe it's, we're going to move forward, so I will move to approve Eastern New Mexico Engineering Cost Proposal for Raton Transfer Station.
No second.
A motion and a second to approve the contract with Eastern New Mexico Engineering. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Close. Question carries. Item J, deliberate in act on Resolution twenty nineteen dash fifty-eight, disposal of surplus property, Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, I believe that probably the city clerks get the, uh, best information on this item and on the next item, and so, uh, if I could ask the city clerk to, uh, give the information to the commission.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet, we do have a resolution, um, the Raton Public Service Board of Directors did approve a resolution at their meeting that was held on October thirtieth, and they would like to, uh, request disposal of surplus property. Um, the items are listed, um, as a Chevy pickup, there's a Chevy, um, Altec double bucket truck, and then also a Chevrolet Altec Digger unit, and we've listed the approximate values and the VIN numbers for each of those. Um, so with your approval this evening, uh, we would then proceed with doing a sale at a public auction, either locally, or we could, um, we have a public surplus website where we could also place these up for auction, and then we would, uh, submit it to DFA for final approval before we did anything.
Questions, comments? We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty nineteen fifty-nine, any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Okay, before we go to item K, I would like to make a motion that would move item N after item K.
Oh, yes. A second.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Okay, that way we can get that report up ahead of the closed session, and certain folks can, uh, hold on. Item K, deliberate in act on Resolution twenty nineteen fifty-nine, municipal court records destruction, permission to destroy records pursuant to municipal records retention policy. Chris Berry?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, you have a resolution, uh, in your packet that discusses the details of destruction of records held by Raton Municipal Court, and I think the, uh, notable thing in the resolution is it says, "The records do not include any records pertaining to DWI criminal case files or other records required to be kept by statute, records less than three years old, video or audio recordings that are evidence in any claim or pending litigation, uh, or the minutes ordinance or resolutions of the city commission or any city board or commission." By your consideration of, uh, this, uh, resolution, you would authorize the city clerk, uh, to destroy the records without retaining a copy, and the city clerk can answer any questions that you have, but you have pretty detailed, uh, information on the actions proposed.
I guess what they would do, my plan, is bring in a big shredder, or is this, I wonder, how, how are they gonna be disposing?
Well, the municipal court clerk, um, I haven't, you know, reviewed the actual volume, I'm not sure, I would report back to you, um, the number of records that would be destroyed. I think we have several options, if we still had a landfill, we could witness burial, which we know isn't an option anymore. Um, we could potentially maybe contact, um, maybe several of the local banks to see if there's a company that they use for their records destruction. Um, there could be a cost associated with that if we do, um, contact a mobile shredder, but if they're already coming down here, um, to do another client, we could potentially share that cost. Um, I do know there's a mobile shredder that came here years ago, the chamber had coordinated it as a community event.
Right.
And they came from Pueblo, so I do have contact information for that entity. Um, we could certainly, uh, use the two shredders that we have here at City Hall, um, if we didn't burn them up, I don't know.
Right.
But, uh, I think if, uh, I think the court clerk's looking to do this project a little bit at a time, possibly, so, um, she did provide a listing.
Yeah.
For you that's included in your packet of the items that she's looking to, um, destroy, and then, of course, her and I would execute that certificate of destruction, um, and it would be placed in the minute book.
Okay. Any questions for my plan?
If the retention schedule is clear, it's adopted, it's needful, it's complicated. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen fifty-nine, municipal court records destruction, permission to destroy records pursuant to municipal records retention policy.
No motion and a second to adopt the Resolution twenty nineteen fifty-nine. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Close. Question carries. Next item would be city manager's report, Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, I'll try to be really quick, I can tell you that there is, uh, a lot going on with city of Raton, but I'll be brief in my comments here, but if you do have any questions, I'd stand for questions. Uh, primarily, what I want to do tonight is give you an update on our infrastructure improvement, uh, projects. We've got several, uh, that are active right now, so construction is ongoing in the Filter Plant Improvement Project, um, construction progress is proceeding on schedule. Uh, we are looking at a completion date of late spring, and so, uh, busy time up there, a lot going on. I would say that the, uh, operators have done really an excellent job of, uh, providing, uh, potable water to the community while this plant is undergoing major construction, so, uh, that's not an easy process, they have, uh, done that and been very successful. And, uh, also, we have, uh, gone between Lake Maloya Water and Eagle Nest Water, and the effects of the Ute Park Fire on pulling in Cimarron River water are very challenging, so the crew has done a lot of work to, and we currently are diverting from the Cimarron River, uh, to try to, uh, save water in, in, uh, Lake Maloya, so, um, they've done a great job there. I would comment that our contractor on the Brilliant Street Hart Avenue Project, that's Northern Mountain Construction, uh, they are currently completing the final phases of construction, which consists primarily of adjustments of utility, uh, features, so that would be manhole, uh, lids and valve boxes. Uh, I would anticipate that they'll be doing that through next week, a little cleanup work, and we'll try to finalize and close out that project. Um, Raton Water Works is also working on, uh, the wastewater lift station located on Hospital Drive. Uh, that lift station has been in service since the nineteen sixties, and is being replaced. Again, it's being replaced on an active line while we're in service. Um, construction is underway and probab, uh, approximately twenty-five percent complete, uh, currently, so as people drive up and down Hospital Drive, you'll see, uh, some, uh, constriction of the roadway there due to that construction, so, uh, we'll want to be careful about driving through there for the next couple of months. Um, we have been notified by the DAM Safety Bureau, that's the Bureau of the State Engineer Office, uh, that their project involved in the evaluation of the Lake Maloya service spillway is, uh, proceeding. They are close to issuing a notice to proceed to their engineer, AECOM. AECOM would perform geotechnical analysis and seismic evaluation of the service spillway proposal, um, that would be to reconstruct that channel, uh, on the left abutment. So we would anticipate that if weather is good and that is issued, we could see that fieldwork completed, uh, during two thousand and nineteen. If weather is not good, uh, it could take as long as till next spring, so we'll monitor that. Lastly, uh, Mayor and Commissioner, I would report that, uh, myself, along with, uh, Mayor Segada, did attend the Western Governors Association, uh, that was held in Santa Fe on November fourth and fifth. I believe that we were the only New Mexico municipality in attendance at that conference, and the conference was very limited, and, uh, as far as attendees, they wanted a, a smaller working group. Uh, the, uh, Western Governors Association is a group of nineteen Western state governors, as well as, uh, three, uh, US territories. Um, just to look at the agenda real quickly, and I'll wrap this up, Mayor, and we talked, uh, the president of that is, uh, the governor of North Dakota, Governor Borgenland, and he had put together a program called Reimagining the Rural West. So the program really was a workshop, uh, to try to drive that theme. Uh, we looked at case studies of resilient Western communities, uh, we had a roundtable on the future of work in the rural west. Uh, we talked about, uh, rural food security and youth engagement, and that's a very quick summary of that conference. I would say that, uh, that was one of the most valuable conferences that I had been in attendance at. Uh, the mayor and I also had a chance to short, to, uh, discuss real shortly, uh, with Mayor Luhon Grisham, uh, some specifics about Raton.
She's the governor.
Excuse me, the governor. And, uh, so I think that was, uh, she had addressed the conference in, uh, valuable context, she recognized some of the work going on in Raton, and we would expect to have, uh, some additional, uh, discussion of Raton initiatives in December with, with the governor.
Scott promised her a good time if she came up.
That's right. That's right. That's all I have, Mayor.
She did promise.
Yes, she did. All right, thank you, Mr. Berry. Okay, at this time, I would enter the motion to go to closing. A motion and a second to enter in closing, executive session. I mean, I need a real positive figure.
Mayor Protim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Mayor Segada?
Yes. I would ask for two-minute.